This conference will now be recorded.
It's August 11, 2021, and this is the Parks and Rec Committee meeting. And we're going to do a row call first because I don't even think we have enough people here. And but we do have presentations. So can everybody say aye for here? You know, right? Darnell? And since Mandy's new, we're going to go ahead and count you, Mandy, as long as you did your thing up at City Hall. You're in.
I did this afternoon, so.
Okay, so you're in. So with me, that makes four, okay? So I think we need to have, what is it, five to six to have a quorum? Shalane, do you know that?
No, there's seven members total, so if you have four, you've got a quorum.
Okay, thank you. So um, since we just did row call, uh, we have a presentation from the Dark Skies. And we'll, we're gonna let Chris wait down the list first. We have a, am I freezing? Okay. We have a nominee for a new secretary, but I think we need to push that to the next meeting since we don't have enough people here. Well, we do, but, and then um, we need to approve May minutes, so we can't do that one. And we need to approve July minutes because we never got those in an email that I am aware of. And I do see Salima arriving, so we now have five of us. So let me go into having, um, I believe it's Jane. Jane, are you ready to do a presentation about the Dark Skies?
Not a presentation, but I'm here to talk to y'all.
Okay, that's fine. And Jane will probably keep her camera off because of her bandwidth. So Jane's, I'll introduce Jane. Jane is in with the Dark Skies. And she's really getting this off the ground this year. And I think she has great things to say, and we'll listen to what she has to say for a little bit. Go ahead, Jane.
Okay. You're ready for me? Um, I think probably most of you here know what Dark Skies means. And before I go further, thank you, Shalane, for putting us all together. Dark Skies has been around for a while now. And it's actually been in Lago for three years, but it's been in Con Vito. It just basically means, let's keep our stars visible. What I try to talk about is what we don't want. We don't want you to turn off all your lights. We don't want you to feel unsafe. International Dark Skies Association is a global organization that is promoting basically the view of the heavens. Three years ago, I brought this to the building committee. And they put in some ordinances to promote Dark Skies. But then nothing else was done. And it's not enough, that's not enough just to get us as a recognized Dark Sky community. So this year, I went to the city council and the mayor and suggested a citizens committee. Do the education needed and the, and the projects needed to get us officially recognized. And they jumped all over that because citizens committees are very popular. Why not? So what we're trying to do is educate. And we have to do certain things like the biggest one, hardest one really, is measuring the dark sky every, every once a month at least. Measuring how much light or dark is in our sky. And it's called Globe at Night. It's a project that the whole world is doing right now. And we, I'm about to try to ask the Boy Scouts to help us on this. I'll tell you real frankly, I can't stay up late that late myself to do it. It has to be a minimum of an hour after official sunset. But basically, it's a real easy thing. You go out there, they will tell you what constellation to look for, where to look for it in the sky, and you can use any kind of night sky app to download to find it. And then they compare it to a picture. How many of the stars from this constellation can you see? And that gives them a measurement of how light or dark our skies are. The other thing we do are events. And right now, we have an exhibition of four local astrophysic, astrophotographers at the Laguna Vista Library. And I'm sure a lot of you have probably seen their photographs on either Nextdoor or on Facebook. They do some amazing work, taking pictures of nebulas, celestial objects that you can't see with your naked eye. But with photography and editing, they can make it all come alive. And it's really interesting exhibit. And I want to put a plug in right now because on the 24th, Tuesday, the 24th, the photographers will be at the library from 4:30 to 5:30, showing you their equipment and how they do what they do. And I'll put that out there, you know, soon. There's some other things that we're doing and that's trying to get ready for a total eclipse, which will be right overhead here in 2024. It could bring a lot of tourists to our area. I'm serious, where I say tens of thousands of people, you know, that might be two. Will be coming here from all over the world. And I want them to come to Laguna Vista and stay in our Airbnbs and buy groceries and gas and bring us a lot of tourist dollars. And I personally think it would be real helpful if we could put ourselves out there as a Dark Sky community by that time. But I don't think many people are aware that it's even coming. I've talked to some people who have gone to these solar eclipses. One, you know, the last one in our hemisphere was in Wyoming. And the woman that heads up the Dark Sky thing in central Texas went there and they stayed five days, which is good for the local economy. And she said, even after five days trying to leave Wyoming, and I don't know if y'all have been there, but I still live up to that area. It took them hours to drive 100 miles because there's so many people up in that area. So that could be a very worthwhile thing. And this is where I get to talk to Chris. I need to say something to Chris. First of all, October is Dark Sky Month. And we want to have at least one star party. And we want to have it at Sunset Park. So I need to get on the calendar with you for that. And the second biggie is, and it's always off, I talked to the mayor. He said, oh, no problem, but let's make it official. Chris, April 2024, and I don't remember the dates right now. I think it's the 4th or 14th. Anyway, in April 2024, I want to be able to advertise that people coming to see the solar eclipse can gather at Sunset Park. It's a daytime activity. Our star party obviously will be a nighttime activity. Sue, um, we've got some other things going on, but I want to throw it out there and have you all talk to me. Hey?
Jane, I'm gonna let you call on us now. And I do have a couple of questions for you, so you're gonna, you're gonna take the lead.
Okay, Darcy, I see your hand. What's up?
Okay, so yes, the solar eclipse is going to be huge. I have a friend that even rented a car and had to get a hotel two years before it happened on the last one. Okay, two years. This is a huge deal. So if people are not taking this serious, they need to look into astronomy and see how these people travel. So there's one thing. And then, and then um, I think personally with the dark, with the dark skies, if, if we get this initiative, or if you get this initiative going, you know, they give you a placard and they give you all sorts of cool things to put on your city as you're coming in that you're a dark sky. I just went through a dark sky community down by, oh, where is that? Down towards past BK, anyway. And um, so my question is, when you need stuff, because I believe you're a 501(c), aren't you? Did you get that yet?
No.
No, not yet.
I, I don't want to.
Okay.
The accounting involved in that seems a little beyond. It's expensive to do the accounting for a 501(c)(3).
Right, okay. Well, I think personally as a Parks and Rec Committee that we should want to help you, just like we would help keep Laguna Vista beautiful or any of the other people. And if you just keep coming back to us, you know, whenever you have an update and we can spread it amongst ourselves and the city and through Chris and through Shalane, you know, that because if you don't have a liaison to the, to the city, you can get lost a little bit, I've noticed. So I think if, if maybe you come and update us whenever anything else is going on, that, that hopefully we can all work together and get this going really well for you and for the community. Thank you.
Oh, believe me, we never asked Shalane to be a liaison per se because the woman's already a liaison to several committees. But she is our point of contact. And some of the local hill country alliances having a Zoom meeting in a week or so. Shalane got the invitation, which is terrific because there, of course, she knows she is the city. We are not an independent, well, we're pretty independent, but we represent the city. We've been tasked by the city to get this done. Because three years ago, they did a couple ordinances and then dropped it. But it takes a lot of work. There's more involved than just having a few ordinances. So Shalane's been with us all the way along. And like I said, we, we haven't asked her to be a liaison per se to come to every meeting. But we update her for everything we do, this, that, and the other. We just got a little bit of money from the city because we do have some expenses. But, you know, normally, I'm working directly with the people from International Dark Sky Association. And they say one to three years. Well, then when you go into it, they say, well, at least three years. I think we've got a real head start because we do at least have some ordinances in place. I'll tell you very honestly, the state is kind of working against us in some ways. One of the things that's up in the air right now is you probably all have heard that the state said that towns cannot dictate what kind of building materials to use. Well, apparently, they think your exterior lighting is a building material. And there are some state organizations like Texas Dark Sky working on that. But it's, it's up in the air. At least our ordinances are in place. They're not the strongest, and they are not being enforced at all. But that's a whole nother subject. It just, you know, I thank Shalane for everything she's done for us. I want to tell y'all, we have a Facebook page we've had for, you know, a while now. We have a website to try to educate people so they have a place to go to find out what it's about. There, last year, I faced a real problem with our police department because I posted something that came from Texas Audubon that they call Lights Out Texas, which mainly applies to, to big cities where these skyscrapers with all the lights on screw up the bird's celestial navigation. And then they fly in circles and get tired and exhausted and die and fall to the ground. Well, the police department didn't like lights out at all. And one thing I want to emphasize, we're not asking people to turn lights out. We're asking them to point your exterior lights toward the ground, shield them so you're not wasting money and electricity to light up the sky. Just light up what you need lit up. Light, light the ground, not the sky, and only put lights on that you need. Don't use unneeded lighting. Don't keep it on all night. If you have a floodlight, make it an motion detector, that sort of thing. So I think it's important to tell people what we don't do, not only what we do do. And um,
Jane, do you have that up somewhere? Like what um, you would like to see, like, like the down lighting? Do you have like a list of that up online on the website? And then also give your website and your Facebook site, please.
Well, Facebook has been around for a while, and it's now called Laguna Vista Starry Skies, which the committee has named themselves. And the Facebook, I mean, the website is www.lagoskies.info. Lagoskies.info. So I don't know what to ask from you all. Accept your support to like and share our posts. To replace your bright lights with something with a warmer light. A warmer light is less disruptive to animals in our own circadian rhythms. Nowadays, on packaging, you look at lumens, not watts. And if you stay below 3,000 lumens, that's a warm light as opposed to those awful blue-white LED lighting. So, you know, warm lighting helps everything.
I think, I think Salima had a question a minute ago. She had her hand up, but now she's blocked out again. But um, and yes, I was talking about that Shalane is our liaison. And I'm sure if you keep coming back to these meetings that, you know, when, when, when we show interest, she can show interest with us, is what I meant, Jane.
Salima, did you have a question?
There she is. I was just gonna say that I can send you, Jane, the contact info for the new Boy Scout troop leader.
Ah, Scott?
Uh, her name's Kami. She took over.
Oh, I thought it was Scott Rowland. Okay, wait a minute. Yeah, send it, you, you've got a way to reach me, right?
Yeah, I'll just DM it to you. Um, and then also my thought on that too was, because I'm connecting the homeschool group with her too, is it might be a cool homeschool science project. Sorry, my dad was calling me.
I did send some information to the homeschool page. I don't know if you ever saw it.
Okay, I'll look on there. I've been a little busy with my dad. Um, but I will bring it up because we've been trying to find things we could do as like a group science project. So that might be a good thing that we can track at home. And then we can kind of talk about an outdoor group setting.
I, I, I think what I sent you was an invitation to our exhibition at the library.
Okay.
I would, I would encourage August 24th, 4:30 to 5:30, you can meet the photographers and they're gonna bring their equipment. And I think that would be an awesome homeschool project. And while we're speaking, Salima, Dark Sky Month is in October. And I, I, I want to have something at the farmer's market.
Okay. Done.
Okay? So I'll get in touch with you about that.
Yeah, just let me know. And I will message you Kami's number. But this is something, like I said, that I think would be great that we could maybe advertise a meetup for the homeschool kids on the 24th. And just kind of say, if, if you guys want to meet up at the library for a cool day. And that would be a good introduction to a unit to then the kids are kind of on fire for it. We could go home and kind of track stuff ourselves after you guys plant the seeds at the library. Because if I talk about it, then that's.
Yeah, well.
Then it was my idea. It needs to be your idea for it to be cool.
Well, we'll, we'll be in touch. I think that would be super, you know? And we could talk to Mandy. I don't know how to tie into Turbick Canyon Trail Conservancy exactly at this particular point. But maybe someday we can do that.
Jane, I have everybody's number.
Yeah, okay.
And your email.
From anybody else? You know, I'm a little scattered right now. I'm not quite sure exactly how we can work together except for a sky party in October. Chris, there's no problem coming out there at night, right? I mean, nobody else has nightstand volleyball, right? You're muted, I. Yeah, it's not, I'm not hearing.
Jane, hold on, turn your mic off and I'll turn my mic off.
Seems like Chris might be having some technical difficulties. While he's working on that, I have a suggestion. I wonder, um, do you think it would be a possible idea to host star parties out at Sunset Park?
Sure.
That might be one way that the Parks and Rec Committee can partner with Dark Skies. Because I know that there are other towns that host star parties and folks could bring telescopes. And I'm not, you know, sure what all that entails. Not that I want to necessarily give you guys a bunch of work, but that might be one, one way that you could potentially partner.
Well, we already have one planned, you know, sketched out for October during Dark Sky Month. And Chris has been trying to talk. So I mean, we'd already planned it for Sunset Park. I would love, you know, if possible, I'm gonna go to the Jonestown Star Party this Saturday because their, their group is separate from ours, but we all have the same goal. And I just want to see how they run it. And I would encourage all of you, it's Saturday night, 8 o'clock, Jones Brothers Park. No fee to get in. I want to go just to see how they run it. But we, like I said, we have a tentative star party for October. We haven't settled on a date and we're definitely counting on being able to use Sunset Park for that. Sue?
Thank you, Jane. That, that sounds great. So does anyone else have any other questions for Jane? Okay, I don't see anyone's hand going on or anyone's camera. And it looks like Chris Mobley is trying to sign back on, but it looks like he has two accounts on it. I see a Chris Mobley and then I just see a Chris. So that might be one of the problems he's having. And he might have to sign back in and sign back out on this account as well. Jane, is, is that, is that what we need to know for right now?
I think so. Please come and visit the exhibit at the library. And on the 24th, if you want to meet the astrophotographers and get an idea of how they do what they do.
Are those the same type of, those are the same guys also? That will be up at the October Dark Skies, right at the park if you need it?
No.
No, they'll be different.
Astrophotographers do a whole different thing.
Okay.
What they do is a lot of computer editing. So you can see, I'm sure you've seen the pictures online. You can't see that through the eye, even with a telescope. So it won't be the same. We'll have regular telescopes at the star party in October.
Okay, okay, that sounds great. We thank you, Jane, for coming. And come back to, come back or stay with us for our next part. We're gonna go into another special guest. Andrew is here to talk about some trails with us. So if you want to listen, you're more than welcome to sit in.
I want to say hi to Andrew. I knew him 12 years ago from Friends of Valponi's.
Hi, Jane, yes, I recognize the name.
Thank you all. I appreciate your attention. Thanks.
Thanks, Jane. And before I introduce Andrew, um, I want us, everybody to know that Diane is here. And so she did show up at 6:32. So we're good for you. We're good. And then this is Andrew. Andrew, I don't have anything on you except for that you do trails. So take it away.
Um, I don't really know what to say to you guys. I'm a long-term resident. I've been here 22 years when I first arrived in Laguna Vista. I was slightly disappointed, to say the least, to, that we didn't have any footpaths or trail systems or, you know, anywhere to walk. I eventually started looking around and I noticed on Texas, sorry, Travis Cad, there is green belts within the city. So basically, I started making my own trails 20 odd years ago. So there's a bunch of trails out there. You know, there is, there's a lot of scope for, you know, trail systems to go in and stuff without trespassing. I'm not 100% sure mine are all on the correct side of the boundary because most of it's a guesswork. But they're there. Chris is, I've taken Chris and Karen out there and showed them the tip of the iceberg. And they both like what they're seeing. I don't know where to go from there, really. Ask me some questions. Oh, I, I don't know how to do this share thing. So I'm gonna try and press this and see if this shares, to share or ask the organizer to make. Oh, because I've got, I've got a Travis County text card thing.
Chris Mobley might be able to share what you have if he's the presenter. We don't really have a presenter. I don't know if Chris can do it or not. Or actually, Dave Street's still here. So if Dave Street can make you a presenter, we can do it. Yep, you're the presenter now. Go ahead.
Gosh, that was kind of frightening. Can you see my screen?
Um, try, try to share again.
I'm trying to share.
Give it a second. Wait. Hold on, let me see. I gotta go to just active cameras. Nope, you're still not, you're still not there. It would, it would show a little thing to your right that it would show up.
I've still, I've still got a diagonal screen through the share button.
Okay. Dave, are you still there, Dave Street?
Yeah, Darcy, I'm here. I've made Andrew a presenter. He should have the thing to share a screen.
Can you tell him what to do?
If you hover your mouse towards the bottom of all the pictures, you should see like mic, camera, and then the screen.
Yeah, it's a share screen, but it's got a diagonal line through it.
Right, if you click on it.
Yeah. So I've got the share button. sorry, I've got a share button, but it won't let me press it. I've got a cancel button.
Yeah, you're the presenter.
Here we go, here we go. Hang on, hang on. Ah, there you go. Can you see that?
Hold on.
Screens.
There it goes, there it goes. Yep, we can see it.
So that, can you see the blue line there?
Yes.
That is green belt.
Nice.
You see, I don't know if you're familiar with that. The bottom road down there is, um, 1431. Uh, hang on, can you see my little pointer? Am I actually showing? Yes, so this one's 1431. This is 1431. Um, this is, let me try and, this is Barquet Ranch Road going up the big steep hill.
Okay, so you're on the airport side, correct?
This is going up to the airport. So halfway up that hill, there's a, there's a trail here. Goes all the way through here, all the way through. And it, um, that, um, circumnavigates the, uh, the side of this hill. So you have the view of the whole of the city, the lake, everything as you're walking along. And that's one of them. And as I say, the, oops, uh, sorry. There you go, that's blowing in it a bit more. But as you can see that, you know, I'm, I've tried to make it on here. And I've just, you know, when I found pins at the bottom of, you know, the monuments at the bottom of people's lots, I've tried to be in between those two. And I've just walked or made trails through this. So there's a bunch of that sort of thing through the city. Okay, I'm back, right, okay, I'm back here.
Okay, let's, let's stop sharing here for a sec.
Yep.
Let me, you, you might have to come back out of that because it's still there on the screen.
Oh, is it?
There we go, perfect.
There you go, right.
Yeah, and is, is this just up on that one side? Or have you tried going on the other side of 1431 at all?
So I don't know what's happening there, because if you go on the other side, um, there used to be one. And if you click on it now, as in the Travis County CAD map, it doesn't bring it up. So I don't know if that means it's recently been sold off.
And how do, how do you feel about the city selling off, um, some of this land? Because I know, um, at the end of June, there was a P&amp;Z meeting. And they were talking about the airport, uh, up there. And there is something in there that is marked for parks. So I would like to investigate that a little bit more. I need, I need to talk to Roy. But, um.
I, I think, I mean, I think the city shouldn't sell off these little chunks of land if they can be made into, you know, uh, green belts, hiking part, hiking places or whatever. I mean, for what they're getting back, it's buttons on the dollar. Um, you know, once you've sold it, you can't ask for people to redonate it to, uh, make a path through the city. I mean, it's, you know, once it's gone, it's gone forever.
Correct. Matter of fact, we have a little meeting with Park P&amp;Z tomorrow. So everybody should be on that meeting. And.
I, I saw another one like that. And I, I don't know how accurate this Travis CAD is and up to date, but I saw one that was sold off to, I think, Something Marina for 600 bucks. And it's like, really? For 600 bucks? Ah, man, I'll go around and buy all the hiking trails for that.
And they were selling land behind houses and stuff like that too. So, so, and, and that's, that's what, what is odd. Because I think, Chris, wasn't the last map we had not up to date as well as what the city property was? And we've been trying to ask for that for the last eight and a half months?
Yes.
Yes, we are trying to get that updated. Um, we, we've been gathering maps. We don't seem like to have the most updated one now though. So it kind of started when we went out there and started bringing this project about, hey, why don't we put a little bit of hold on these properties until we can figure things out? We're not there just yet. We were a little further than we were though. Um, but we, we haven't got the accurate. And evidently, they don't update all the time. At times, you know, you can, you can be, you can be behind. But we're still, we're still looking, looking at and trying to get the most updated map. We, we sent some out, uh, a while back of what, what we have been sent. But I don't know how recent they all are. It's still, it's still a work in progress.
Thank you, Chris. And Diane has a question. I see you, Diane.
Uh, yeah, thank you, thank you, Darcy. Um, I apologize to everybody for being late. I was out in the garden and lost track of time. Uh, which I'm still a mess, so I apologize for my appearance also. Um, I, my question for Andrew, did this map that you just showed us, do you have a, uh, can you send it to us? I would really like to print that out so I could actually see things.
Um, that's just pulled off Travis County, um, Travis.
With the blue line on it?
Yep. All you do is, so if you want to see a property, I mean, the way I do it and the way I did it to find all these things is I just look in the city and I go, oh, look, look at this one. And I click on it and it tells you who owns it, the value of it, everything like that. Um, as I say, I do it. Sorry?
You, you can, how do you get the whole, the whole compo, do you just keep zooming out from it and you can get the whole layout?
Yep, yep, you can zoom in, zoom out. Um, I, I mean, it's, you know, I, it's as up to date as Travis County is, if you see what I mean. I don't know how accurate it is. But, um, you know, I just do it like that. That's all, I've, that's how I've always done it.
Well, I was hoping to get with the blue line already on it that we could.
Yeah, you can. Uh, let me see if I can, um, share the screen again and I'll see what, if I, I'll show you what I mean.
You could, Andrew, you could also just send it to Karen in an email and then she can send it to us.
Yeah, I think Karen's already got it. So I'm, I'm just gonna show you the screen, share the screen again. So you see how the blue line's on it? This is just a, you know, I'm, um, can you see, I'm on traviscad.org in the web address?
Yes, yes, the CAD map search, yes.
Right, exactly. So there it is there. So let's say I want to see, um, let me see if, uh, sorry. This is gonna be difficult. Yeah, this is gonna be difficult because I don't have a mouse. It's, my fingers are kind of sweaty. Um, so let me just, I'm trying to find something else. Here we go. Here's, here's another one. I want to know who owns that property. There you go, you see, City of Lagavista, that's another green belt.
Wow.
You see how I do it?
Yes.
Who, who owns this, who owns this big chunk of land up here? You see in between all these houses? Well, there is no houses up there. So you just click on it. Uh, I'll have to. As if I, uh, sorry. And, you know, again, that's probably, that's probably the City of Lagavista again. You know, so that's what all I do is I just click on it. City of Lagavista. You know, the trade value for this green belt's $5,000. I don't know what they get for them when they sell them. You know, here we go, here's another one. City of Lagavista.
That's an option I didn't know we could do on, uh, on, uh, Travis CAD. I would have to like put in the address and then you can get it. But I haven't, I've never used this aspect, so this is really good.
Right, so you can, you can see here, what I'm saying is, here's a road. You enter here, you walk around the back of all these houses, if there was houses there, but there isn't. I mean, you can cross over into a parkland here, parkland here, walk down here, walk down here, walk down here. You can exit back out onto the road there. Do you see, and that's all I've done over the years.
Mm-hmm. Super cool. That's amazing.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I think that's kind of what we did when we were looking at Chris Mobley's maps when he presented them to us about three months ago, is that we were looking at all these small little pieces, especially up at the airport, you know? And, and you have to have an entrance on a street. You can't walk into someone's backyard. So it has to have a street entrance. And, and, but if all those little green pieces are saved, you know, not just for humans, but for animals, for getting through the city. I mean, if we start blocking all this off, we're gonna get down with coyotes walking down the street like everybody's, you know, and the deer walking down the street because they can't find themselves through an area.
Right. Do you see how I'm clicking on this one? This piece, so this piece here, if I click on this one, this is the original blue piece I told you about, going across the airport. And then if you cross over the road, this used to pull up City of Lagavista, but it doesn't pull up anything anymore. So I don't know where that stands. I don't know if that means they've sold it and it's been re-done or I have no idea why that's. Because I, so I had, or there is a trail that crosses the whole, you can see it all comes down here, all the way across, basically goes all the way around the, the, what I call the bowl of Lagavista. And it, you know, you can come off the, uh, the road here, walk all the way around the bowl, cross over Barquet, walk around, uh, bad, bad driving here. Cross the bar, round, all the way around, all the way around, all the way around, all the way around. You see it comes out and bison.
And I apologize again if I, if I missed it earlier in the conversation, but it's all, that, that blue line that you had outlined for us, um, Andrew, that is all on the north side of 1431?
Yes, that's halfway up the hill.
Okay, that's one.
That's halfway up the hill. Right, I'll, I'll come back out of this so you can, you can, uh, see me. Not that you really want to, but.
I know, not me. I ain't gonna make myself disappear here.
Does anyone else have any questions for Andrew? Do any citizens have any questions for Andrew? Okay, Andrew, I, I think, I think if we get this going, because we've already talked to Turn Back Trail and now we have Mandy on our, on, with us. And she, so to me, hopefully we get this all going to where we're saving these green pieces and saving these little tiny pieces of land so people can still enjoy Lagavista. I mean, that, that to me seems like the thing to do.
And there's some hidden gems down there. So there is a trail that goes basically from the lake through Turn Back Canyon up to 1431. Um, it's absolutely stunningly beautiful when it's, um, there's water running down the, down there. It goes past the golf course, you know, some lakes down there. There's a waterfall down there. I mean, I've got a 17-year-old daughter. She basically grew up down there playing in all the streams and, you know, we, you know, as a, as a child, she used to call little things like, you know, we, we still call it the Santa's Grotto and things like that, the little caves and things like that. So, I mean, it's absolutely stunning. Um, it's a hidden gem.
And, and do you have any video or anything like that you could send so we can start sharing some of this to get more people interested? I know we don't want to like kill these trails before we have it, but just some simple pictures, I think, might get the public maybe a little involved a little more so we get more people that maybe want to help make these trails.
Mm-hmm. I mean, so I used to maintain them, or I, I don't know if I should admit it, but I used to maintain them, um, to, um, I don't have the time now to do it. So they're kind of getting a bit overgrown, but they're, they're there. You know, it's just, you know, get out there and get, uh, get the stuff. Uh, I, I can see your hand, Mandy. I have, um, I have, uh, photos from the years, obviously with my daughter playing down there. I can go back out and take some more recent ones. So.
Thank you.
Your trails are pretty much what, that trail you're talking about that goes from the lake all the way up, that's pretty much what Turn Back Canyon Trail follows. So we just had to.
That was built 22 years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
That was one of the first.
Yes, it's a great trail. There are just a few spots where we tried to, where we wanted, make it a little bit different to make it a little bit easier for people of different levels. But, and then your trail over behind, I call it Behind the Sonic, you know, that you were showing us. I, I've been walking that for the last 13 years. So, um, it's great. It's a beautiful trail. So you've done an amazing job with what, with the bones you put in there, so.
Yes, it's, yeah, I enjoy doing it, so.
Well, well, I hope maybe when it gets a little cooler, some of us can all get out there and, and, and show some of us that have no idea where this is. I've been here seven years and I have no idea where any of this is. And, and so that might be a great fall trip for maybe some of us to just get out there and, and take some pictures and, you know, and have a good time before, uh, they lock us down again.
Yeah, I, I built a lot of trails around here because I, my, I worked for the Barquet, the Canyonlands people, Fish and Wildlife for a bit, but, uh, that's how I know Jane. Um, and I've built most of their trails. Um, I, Doe Skin Ranch, most of those, you know, I've just been doing it. And that's why I enjoy doing it for some ra, crazy reason.
Well, well, Andrew, we are kind of looking at something over on Bonanza right now, right off, um, and it's tomorrow. And we would invite you to come to the P&amp;Z meeting tomorrow. There's 2.3 acres and it looks like it could be amazing for an agility course or some type of trail system up through there. And it's right here at the top of the, top of town. So, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty, I, I think it's a pretty cool piece of property. I mean, there, there's space that's flat enough for picnic tables and then it goes down into a canyon with oaks and all sorts of stuff. So we're hoping that we, we get the city to hear us tomorrow. So. And you're welcome to come to that as well.
Sorry, where was it?
It's at the P&amp;Z meeting. You just go on to the city website tomorrow and look at the parks or the pu, planning and zoning, sorry. And you'll see the meeting and the link in there and it's tomorrow.
Okay, um, uh, the other snippet of information I've got, I suppose, is, um, we're currently working on a, a trail next to the Activity Center, a POA trail. So I'm, I'm doing my best to put trails out there.
The, the POA that's up here on Dawn?
Mm-hmm.
No. Down on American.
Oh, the POA, um, um, the Activity Center, the gym.
Oh, oh, on Barquet, on Barquet. Oh, oh.
On the American.
American.
Yes, okay, yes, down there.
Behind my house, that trainway right behind my house, literally.
Perfect. And, and we appreciate you coming, Andrew. And if anyone else has anything to say to Andrew, you can talk right now to anyone else. Okay, then, well, thank you for coming, Andrew.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're in for Chris Mobley's, um, monthly report to us, correct?
Can y'all hear me? Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Good. Well, thank you for the hint, whoever gave it to me. And it looks like, looks like we're on only one mic. Okay, monthly report, um, we met to discuss restroom options for Sunset Park. We're looking at a turnkey project that is handicap accessible with two stalls for women and two for men. And a solar option was also quoted. Um, this will be coming to council probably within the next couple of weeks. So if you remember what we first talked about for a restroom at Sunset Park was a restroom that had one stall each, was handicap accessible and had, had attached to it a, a storage building. So what we were able to, what we're able to come up with now for less of the price so far would be two stalls each with a solar option. So we're kind of doubling what we were doing before. And, um, that will, that should be coming to council within the next couple of weeks. Uh, city council has given us approval to get restrooms and a playground out of this year's money if we can do it. So we're really hoping to get bids and to, and to get things going on. So, uh, I submitted and was granted a $13,000 grant for the airport. And it was one of those, I can't believe the grant is this easy. It can be used for anything that, that causes, that you have to do to operate the airport. It's $13,000. It can be used starting from. It's thirteen thousand dollars. It can be used starting from, back from December twenty twenty. It's a COVID grant and you can use that thirteen thousand dollars all the way through the middle of May, uh, middle of two thousand twenty-five. So it was basically just. Sit, you know, submit for it. We got it. It's thirteen thousand dollars. That's great. We'll be able to, uh, three, uh. It's reimbursable, so we'll be able to do something. So it looks like. Right now, best case scenario, the airport will not be in, will not be in the red. So this sort of helped us. It was kind of a nice thing to get at the end. Met with two playground companies to discuss playground options. Like I said, city council has said that, you know, go and look at getting, trying to get a playground and trying to get something going. And, and this fiscal year. So, um, I received, well, actually three, I received two bids and then I had someone come back and try to, um. Give me another bid, so probably by Thursday or Monday, I'll have three bids for options for playgrounds. Which is kind of exciting about being able to get that, um, get that done this year and get that out to Sunset Park, so. We, uh, we had a, oh, the playground would be age appropriate. Um, and one of the most important things shaded, uh, you, it's gotta be shaded. You're gonna, we're gonna bake the kids out there for, if it's not shaded, so. Um, and have a safe fall surface. So, and we had a site. We had a site visit from Tech Start to discuss our city, our city's overlook project. We had, it's the project on fourteen thirty-one on the fourteen thirty-one right away, almost before you get to the, uh. The RV park. It's, it's sort of on the border of, uh, uh, the, the border coming in, into the city. It was excited, are we excited that they came out here and then just this last week, they, they finished a site study to see if what we're proposing. Fits into that piece of property that, that we've got. So we're moving on that, which is really, really exciting. And then, um, our summer pool operations will be winding down Friday. Uh, we will continue to be open on the weekends through Labor Day on Saturdays and Sundays from twelve to five. But we're, we're, we're winding it down. We had forty, forty kids participating on the swim team. Over forty water aerobics participants and many, many people doing swim lessons. So it was a very, very successful summer. Once we got the pool, pool, pool up and running, so. Um, that's about what we've got going on right now. We're, we're in the process of, um, discussing our budgets with, with city council. We've had a couple of workshops and we actually had a workshop yesterday and I think the council. Said they're ready for, uh, the budget to go to like a city council meeting. So I'll keep you guys up on where we're at, but, um. We've been, we've been discussing, um, budgets with, uh, with city council too. So, and anybody else, uh, has any other questions? I can answer those or that's, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you, Chris. I do have a couple of questions. Can you send the committee? Pictures of the bathroom, the playground that you're thinking of and the overlook pictures, cause we have not received any of those.
The overlook really, oh, I can send you what the site looks like and there's nothing in it.
Yeah, but, oh, so you guys haven't come up with the design yet of what you wanna do?
Came up with design with them and what, here's what happened was they gave me pictures of some examples of some of the things that we could look for the project. Some of those examples had structures that were up to ten feet tall. So of course our, our initial thing was to get something that was ten feet tall. We met with Tech Start and said it can only be four feet. I said, whoa, so why are you sending me pictures of ten feet? Well, we shouldn't be doing that and we're just really, we're really cracking down on that. I made a suggestion that you might wanna send me pictures of things that I can use before we waste eight months, but I didn't do that. So we're, we're, we're readjusting, we're readjusting those to heights to kind of fit. And where they're, where they're at right now is seeing if what we're, we're putting together. Will, will fit into that site plan, but I have a sketch of that that I can send you. Realize when you get it though, it's not gonna be a B ten foot, it's gonna be four foot. So we're gonna have to really, we're gonna have to really scrunch things, but you'll get an idea of what we're trying to do. Um, I don't, you know, I don't have the. Um, I just sent Eric, uh, just today, uh, the, the pictures of the, of, of the playground that, that we're looking at. I will send those out when I'm able, when I'm able to, the, the restrooms and, and the playground.
Okay. Absolutely. Does, does, does Eric okay that before we get a look at them or how does that work? I've always kind of wondered that.
I'm not really sure about the protocol. The way that I, I kind of feel like things should be done is that we should, we should share those with, we should share those with council. And then, and then, and get, and get some feedback also from, from, from the Parks Board. And it may be backwards. I just, in, in my history, it's always. It, it's always on my mind, share with council, city before you, then you share.
Right, right, because it, it has two things that go to council, so you'll have the first time and then it, it can come back and be voted on. I mean, they can vote on it for the first time, but I think, Shalane, stop me if I'm wrong. I think it gets two things at city council before it gets voted on by them. Correct, Shalane?
It gets two, two things on.
Like two, like, like it will be on the agenda twice, like you'll have a discussion and then you'll have a vote.
So it depends, um. Sometimes it depends on how it's posted to the agenda, because sometimes the agenda will say discussion and possible action. So it really just depends on how the actual item is, is posted. Sometimes it takes twice, sometimes it doesn't.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, cause I, I was just, you know, thinking the last time what happened last year was that, um. A lot of this, no one knew, you know, and then you brought us pictures and then, um. That's when we had said, you know, what about that back building? And then you checked that and said you could get one cheaper. And so I kind of think it, it might come to us first and because if we give you an idea. At, then you could go to council and say to them, and the Parks and Rec. Refer me to do, say this or do this. And so that way it shows that you have the backing of Parks and Rec Committee behind you.
Yeah, unfortunately, a lot of this has to do with timing and I know I always say that, but we just got a city manager on within the last month. And the decision was made talking through council to go ahead and go forward with these two aspects of it. So, uh, you don't wanna slow the process down where you can't do it because we only meet once a mu, once a month. Ideally, it would be to say, this is what we're looking at. What do you guys think? But, you know, we're, you know, our, our money starts over again in October, so. Talking, when council said you have, you know, go ahead and go forward with this, that's six weeks. So we sort of really, I mean, Eric's been handling the restroom part and I've been trying to handle the, the, the playground part. When I'm able to send that to you guys so you can see, I'll, I'll, I'll let you see what that looks like.
Yeah, a, a simple email I think would be sufficient for all of us to at least see what's going on. And, 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 you know, come to a senses that, you know, that this was something that we were looking at for the last year. So we would like to be a little bit of a part of it. And, and then, um, so. I also heard at that city council meeting, yes, uh, the other day, that. They might be looking at trying to put golf into your hands. So I would look at that coming down the line too, Chris. Someone mentioned that yesterday.
It was mentioned in a discussion, in a meeting yesterday with one city council person. Who, who might, might say that it might be a good mix with Parks and Recreation. And the golf course, but have been given absolutely no direction on that right now.
Right, right. And, and I'm, I'm on the golf committee too and, and we've kind, we've kind of discussed it a little bit. And I think it's a big add to your plate. Um, I, 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 I don't know where, uh, Chris from the golf, I mean, he's running the place. So now would he speak to you and then it go, but anyway, but that's here nor there. But, um, I just wanted to give you, you know, and everybody else on this committee a little heads up. But, but some of the things that are being said at city council meetings. About, you know, Parks and Rec and, and you and what you, you know, what you'll be heading up.
Does pay to watch those meetings, absolutely.
Yes, it does. So, and, and then, um, will you be at the Planning and Zoning Committee tomorrow?
I had not planned on it, but if it's a Zoom meeting, that's simple. I'll just take my. Take my laptop, laptop home and, and get, get on that, so.
It, it is and, and the thing about parks will be coming, uh, about the Bonanza property is on there again tomorrow. It got sent back to them because I think they have to prove now that that can't be a park. I believe that that's how it, it reads, that they need to prove that we cannot use that for parkland. So, um, I'm hoping that everybody on this committee shows up tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get ahold of the link and that, that's an easy watch.
And Dave, Dave Williams is the liaison for there and you can also talk to Roy. But, um, the meeting I believe is at seven. And it's on, it's online through the website, so. Does anyone else need to ask anything of Chris?
I think.
Diane, go ahead.
You took care of some of my questions, Darcy. I was wondering about the designs and things because. I, I agree, it would be, I mean, that's kind of part of the function and I absolutely agree with not slowing down the process either. But there's a way to email to kind of, so the Parks and Recreation Committee kind of keeps abreast of what's being designed for the park. I, I think that would be good, uh, since we're in the loop, so to speak. Um, but my question, and I, it may be inappropriate at this time as you, as you indicated with regard to this, but some of, uh, the complications with the. Designs, Chris, is the, the bids that you had, uh, for the, um. The bathroom situation, uh, and we're getting two and two now instead of the previous, but I, I may have missed it. I didn't hear a price. Uh, you referenced the amount of money previously as the amount of money. Uh, but I didn't see, I didn't hear anything, uh, relevant to. Or, or in context with the price for, that we're getting more for our money.
The price.
More for less.
The price that I think will, the, the one that will, will be put in front of council will be two hundred and five thousand dollars. Which is significantly cheaper than what last one was gonna be, if I remember correctly. We were, Shalane, weren't we talking the two fifty, two eighty range with?
I know, it was, I thought it was exorbitant, but, um.
I, I, I believe it might have been two eighty-five.
Yeah.
But if I'm not mistaken, sorry, Shalane, I didn't mean to, he said Shalane and I stepped in.
I don't mind at all.
But, but I really, I believe the price last time was like two eighty-five. So if you're getting them at, at two oh five and is that with the solar? Because that was really kind of something that we had asked too, if we can get them solar powered.
Solar option, yes, yes.
Okay, and is the solar option higher than the two oh five?
No, I mean, that, that is with the solar option.
Wow, that's amazing, Chris. See, see now, yeah.
When you take out the, uh, storage at the back of it, that was where your expense was, you know, by adding storage to it. So I can tell you what's more exorbitant though. I'm spending, it, it's two oh five for a restroom and a, in a playground is a hundred or a hundred and fifteen. It's like, man, you think you'd be able to spend more money on the, on the playground, but that's just how things go.
And, and, and do you know how?
Well, that was my other question.
Go ahead, Diane.
I'm, I'm sorry, the segue to my other question. Thank you, Darcy. Uh, the, uh, perfect segue to my other question was with regard to the shade, providing shade, uh, on the playground. Are, are we, since we haven't seen any designs as far as I know, um, uh, is the shade gonna be like a, a permanent? Wooden structure or is it perhaps going to be one of those sale, the sale kind of structure?
It's like integrated, which means that there's a, there's shade over a piece or it totally covers the whole thing. So this would be totally covering the whole thing. It's not, it's not.
Oh, okay.
It's not an integrated piece where it's, it might be over a slide and over something else. This, this would cover the whole, the, 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 the whole square footage of the playground. So you're getting, you're getting.
With a solid roof or a, a, a trellis sort of thing or is it solid, like no sunshine coming down at all?
It would be fabric. So you're gonna get, you're gonna get like the breeze, like what you see when you go to the ballparks and, and over the, over the, the, the stands and all that. Or, or in the dugout, yeah. It's gonna, it's not.
Oh, okay, I was.
You got something solid.
I was visualizing.
Yeah, it would be something.
I was visualizing.
Yeah.
You, you, you can't talk at the same time, guys. Hold on. Chris, hold on.
We were waiting.
Diane, you talk, you talk and say what you were visualizing.
Okay, yeah, we were, I could tell we were waiting for each other, but then the timing, we both still started at the same time, so it's pretty funny. Uh, apologies, Chris. Thank you, Darcy. Yes, I was visualizing kind of like the sail thing where the point where there's some, there's some, uh, aesthetic to the top of it. Where, you know, there's curves and the points and so that it is, you know, kind of beautiful and not just a flat cover over everything.
And then, okay, and then, and then, and also, Chris, what, what will be the floor made out of on this playground? Is it gonna be like the pieces of rubber or will it be sand or is it the bouncy stuff? So if someone falls, they don't get hurt and is it ADA, um. Compliant?
It is ADA compliant and the fall surface would be the, the bark.
Okay, is it tire bark?
No, like just regular, regular bark.
Okay, regular bark.
Reded rubber or not, not a permanent surface. That's when you get into the real expenses and things.
Yes, I know, but. What if, what if we put in like what you have planned now? But pre-plan it a little bit to where if we can get some donations to make that the rubber. Because that stuff lasts forever, ever.
And do is if you build, if you build, uh, the container, you know, around the, around the playground, if you build it cement. Then you can certainly take things out and put things back in. But if you're building it with the, like the, the rubber ties around it, that, that's harder to do. So what they recommend is build it with cement. You can fill it with any, anything that you want. If you later on, you wanna take it out and fill it with somebody else, you can't.
Okay, perfect, perfect. And, and does anyone else have any other questions for Chris? Diane? Diane? Diane?
You gotta give me time to click, okay? Yes, the dimensions, that, uh, we, since, uh, nobody corrected me, so as far as I know, we haven't seen any pictures of the, the, uh. The visualization of the playground yet, but roughly, or do you have dimensions?
Well, nobody's seen pictures yet. We, I just got things in yesterday from the guy, so, you know.
I wasn't being critical, I was just, uh, just.
I think the footprint is fifty by a hundred.
Oh, okay.
So you're talking pretty significant.
Right, very significant, super.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's great. And, and do you have to bring three bids back to the city council for them to?
No, what we're doing, what we're doing is going by buy board, which is already an approved. That, that's already approved vendor. If we were to have to bid this out, inspect this out and all that, there's no way we're getting this done.
Right. It, it, it takes.
Do things is by buy board, yes ma'am.
It takes forever. And you're, you're already in the twenty twenty-one CIP. That they took part of the money away. Now they're gonna give you part of the money back because of the storm. So I understand that. And then next year I saw also on the meeting that they'll. Look at in the next year's budget will be the entrance. And a few other things. I can't remember what it is. I'm sure Shalane remembers. Um, but it is moving along and, and, and I'm sure all of us here appreciate it, that it is moving along finally. And that we will get some bathrooms this year. And, and that is still going in the spot that is down by the parking lot, correct?
Yes, the, the bathroom will be right next to where the playground is where it was originally laid, laid out. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I think next year it's the, the access to the park and a few benches and tables. And then the, the, the rest of the items that we were looking at, like the skate, skate park and community garden and basketball bank shot. Will be fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three.
And, and we also might be looking at this property on Bonanza. And, and we also might be looking at this property on Bonanza. If we get this, that we can make a community garden there as well. Uh, we've already, I think, uh, Salima can answer to this. She sent you some planter boxes and stuff that this guy sells six of them for $60 apiece. And that's way under anything that we can have prefabbed or build ourselves. So that's something great that, you know, we found online. And I believe Salima sent you that. And so the community garden, if we could have a couple of those around would be fantastic. There's one up at the elementary school right now. And, um, they do quite well with it. There's, um, probably, I see people out there at least, at least three times a week, or not three times a week, three times a month caring and doing different things. So I, I think that would come off really well. And, um, how does everybody feel? I think, I think, Chris, that we're done asking you questions, but if you want to stay with us, I wanted to know how everybody feels, um, about Dawn Point or Dawn up here. I think, I think personally, now that all the vegetation has gone in, it looks quite well. I mean, you know, I, I wish it was a fountain, but I could also see the deer drinking out of that fountain and causing wrecks. So I think, I think what's up there might be, you know, really well. There's Salima. So Salima, do you want to talk anything about the community garden?
Um, so a lady posted that she could do boxes really cheap. It was 60 boxes for an eight by four, $60 for that box already pre-built. And it was a minimum of five. So it'd be $300 for five boxes. For the price of one, one box, if we went to Home Depot and bought the supplies ourselves and made it, we could get five boxes from this lady. And that was, um, me pricing it out. I went into A and M and they have like, um, really cool thing, how to start a community garden. And I just kind of went down their business model, um, to research it. And it really cuts the price almost like a tenth of the price if we're able to get the boxes at that price. Because then all we need is dirt and then maybe some gravel or something for people to walk on to keep the actual weeds and grass down in between the boxes. And again, I really think that we could get a lot of dirt and stuff like that donated. So it might be a feasible way for us to get something done really cheap and easy. Um, like I said, $300 for five boxes. Most people rent a quarter or a half a box. So that would be anywhere from 10 to 20 families that would be able to participate the first round of this community garden. And I think that ideally that's a pretty good number. Um, cause a lot of people, you know, depending on where we put it, it's only going to appeal to a certain amount of people. And a lot of people out here have their own great gardens. So cheers to them. Um, but you know, like I said, me and Darcy saw that and I was like, oh my gosh, screenshot it. I think I sent it to you, Chris. If not, let me know and I'll email it. Cause I sent you another thing too about the roller skating thing. I know. So I'm, I may have forgotten to send the actual, sorry guys, I sent him. Sorry. I, I'm always at parks. I have no life. Um, but yeah, I think, I think the community garden, um, would be a doable thing. And I think just watching the community board and watching what people talk positively about, which it's not a lot, guys, it's not a lot. But the community garden is one thing that a lot of people across political lines, across aid groups, everybody's really excited about. And I think that would be a big win for us, um, with the community. If we could just get a little something, something going. So, yep, that's all I got to say.
And, and I would like to add to that because we could have just got a whole big old massive thing of river rock right now for free out of these people's yard. They're re-landscaping and they pushed all of that to the edge of their property and they've offered it for free. Now I know when you're gardening, you need that as drainage and we could have, we could, if we could have scooped that up and I could have said, yeah, so I'm with the Parks and Rec and we will be by tomorrow with a dozer and a dump truck to get that. We could have taken all of that for free as a donation and wrote them because we are now, I believe, a 501(c). We could have wrote them a receipt for it. And we could have hauled that off to start these gardens or a path or anything. So there's so much out there that people don't realize is actually for free in Lago Vista. Um, I know when it comes to the city, there's all sorts of, you know, regulations and things you gotta jump through as a city. But if things were donated to us and then we could just get the manpower from the city to get it, we could do such great things, just like Keep Lago Vista Beautiful does. I mean, how are we the Parks and Rec and Keep Lago Vista Beautiful is doing more than we do? Salima, I see you. Go ahead.
So my question is, is what exactly permission wise do we need to do to have council say like, yes, we can do a community garden? Because I feel like once we get the, yes, we can do a community garden with the 501(c), it would materialize so quickly because we would be able to get these donations. There's always free dirt. There's always leftover supplies from people and we'd be able to do it in, you know, pretty quick, especially like I said, these boxes are built. So it's, and it's right over by my farm. So we could pick them up and it's on the way to, um, it's past Lago a little bit. So we would actually pass some of that part coming back. Um, and so, and I have like water tanks. I mean, I have stuff we can use too, of course. I'm, I'm a freaking hoarder of farming stuff. I mean, come on, tillers, I have all kinds of stuff. But again, I think until we put it out there and say, we're doing a community garden, we're never going to know who's going to pop up and say, well, I happen to have. So I just don't know what that looks like because I know we've talked about it. I know that, that we kind of said, we just need the money to do it. But what if we don't need money to do it? We just kind of need the permission to do it.
Correct. Correct. And, and that, and that's where Chris and Shalane is going to come in because Chris works for the city and Shalane's our liaison. And so if, if we can get something going with the city and, you know, I, I'm the nerd that goes to all the meetings. So, and I don't feel bad about stepping up and saying something. But, um, also what I was thinking was if we did one plot or something that multiple families could join to, that we could give out for the less fortunate, like we all farm it, like whoever, whoever's getting the little plots. Let's say we have eight or 10, because we can buy them by five. So let's say we have 10. If we do nine as, as co-op and sell those out to co-op and let the families put them in and do the 10th as a community and we give that out to Marcia or Marcia, Marcia, who does, um, the community outreach, you know, for the food and stuff like that. I think that, that could be like a fantastic thing that we get going to spread the love. I mean, I, I have a, a seed thing in my house right now that would feed two families for two years. I bought that at the height of the pandemic. I have no land. Okay. But I have these, these great seeds that, that would feed two families for four years for two years. So I could donate that, you know? You have to plant that within a certain amount of time. I see Diane said she was working in her garden. She looks like she would love to come out and, and laugh with all of us or have a glass of wine or a beer or a coffee.
All she has. Cause it sounds like she has some stuff that I need.
Right. So, 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 you know, I, I think this is all great information. Um, I've never ran one of these meetings. So right now I feel like I could just talk forever and you're all my subjects. Go ahead, Diane.
Caution us to make sure we're, we're doing our best since there's a break in the conversation to stick to the agenda.
Yeah. Yeah. I think this is past the, I think we've ended the agenda. Right? Correct? We've ended the agenda. Do I need to say that? I think this is future meetings.
Everything on the agenda and you're not going to take action on anything. I think from what I heard.
Right.
I would just make it clear that agenda items, I think it was one, two, and three, um, you won't be taking any, any action on tonight and that the recommendation would, would be for the committee chair to carry that forward to the next agenda. Um, and then I think at that point, if you're done covering everything that's on the agenda, nothing else is on the agenda. So it really shouldn't be a part of the committee conversation. At that, that point you would just ask someone if they want to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Do we get to talk about future agenda items? No, not at all. Okay.
That is no longer on the committee agenda and it won't be. Um, what I would recommend in case you happen to run one of these again, um, when you're doing a great job, by the way, um, would be that just to remind all the committee members that if they have any topics they would like to consider for a future agenda topic, to please email that to Karen. Reminder that you all as committee members are not supposed to send emails out to the entire committee because that creates a what we call a walking quorum. So if you have information that you want to get out to the entire committee, send it to Karen and Karen can send it to the rest of the committee as the chair.
Yeah.
And then if I mentioned, if you have future agenda topics, you can always send those to Karen as well.
That, that's what I've been doing. I've been trying not to, uh, put everybody in a loop unless it was something, you know? But I do see Diane's hand up. So I'm going to let her talk real quick. Diane, you.
I just have a, a, it, it depends on if it was on the agenda item because I have to apologize. I did not, I have not read the agenda. Was the Bonanza property? Cause I have something to say about the Bonanza property with all the talk that we had associated. But if the Bonanza property was not on the agenda, then I can't. Okay. That's what was my question.
You, you, you can go to the meeting tomorrow if you'd like to.
Oh yeah. I will do my best. Smalls Thursday, right?
And I see Dina. Did you want to say anything, Dina? No. Okay. And then let me see. Do we have anyone from the committee that needs to put any input into here? Okay. Do we have anyone from the, oh, what is this? The citizen comments that needs to be put in here? And I'm not seeing anyone. Come on. So I will say I adjourn this meeting. Um, we will be in another meeting in two weeks and it looks like Chris is going to be with city council within this time. And I thank you for all coming to this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.